All right, we'll move on to the next section of the meeting. Thank you everyone again for joining and it'll be great when we can have everyone back in person. But it's always nice to hear about the experiences of seasons and just get a little glimpse of that. So thank you all for joining us this evening. We'll move on to the comments to the board. John, any citizens comments to the board on agenda items?
Not currently, we don't have any citizens comments to the board on agenda items. I did see a raised hand, just letting people know who are watching via Zoom. If you would like to make a comment to the school board, you need to visit our website at www.lasd.us. Click on the Survey Monkey link underneath the paragraph about the school board. Enter your name, address, and your comment for the board and it will be read later on. So right now, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Fetzer.
All right, we'll move on to board representatives comments. We'll start here at the high school, Ms. Reaver, I'll start with you.
All right, thank you, everybody, and I hope everyone's having a good evening. Just a quick note about our student athletes that were just there. I also want to just recognize that Kimmy was the first female student from Lewisburg to medal at the state tournament and to bring home the gold freshman year. That's, that's pretty exciting to look forward to what will children accomplish in her remaining years. But I did want to note that she will be our first female up on the wall of fame for swimming in Lewisburg, and that's really exciting. Moving on to some other things, the main thing we're working on right now is getting that course selection guide up and ready and revising just some minor tweaks to course descriptions and things and doing all of the backend work that need to happen, happen with that. We are hoping to have that ready to go right after the spring break. And we'll also be scheduling our Zoom sessions for our eighth grade parents that are coming over. And also, we do one for senior year options that our guidance department coordinates. And we'll be doing that via Zoom this year and on a webinar. And hopefully, we'll be able to get lots of, lots of people to attend virtually with those. The other thing I would like to bring up is this week, we had some individuals from Loyola Sock, actually yesterday, come down to the district. They're getting ready to do a building project that includes an addition onto their, their middle school. And some of them have been in the building before or have heard about our building and really wanted, you know, the chance to kind of see what a newer high school in our area looked like. And they've heard really great things about Lewisburg. And so it was really nice to be able, you know, to take them through. It was Wednesday afternoon. We arranged it so that our students weren't in the building, so that we were able to give that in-person tour. And, you know, it's really been a while since I've been able to, to kind of show off our building to someone from the outside. And, and, you know, not that you get comfortable or start taking things for granted, but it was, you know, just to have that excitement of being able to share what we are able to do now that we weren't able to do before, which is really, you know, the importance of this building. It's not just about being in, you know, a modern facility or, you know, in terms of how it looks, but actually what you get to accomplish in it. And it was really awesome to be able to talk about the types of opportunities that exist for our students. And we received a very nice thank you from them. And so we're wishing them well with their building project. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wetzel.
Thank you, Paula. Just to start off, we're excited this year to be able to celebrate Autism Awareness Month in person. Last year, we were cut short, that's coming up in April. And one of the students in our autistic support classroom actually designed the shirt last year. He's very artistically talented and throughout the building, he decorates the windows for us. He also writes in the cafeteria on the, the glass panels above the different food options. So he designed the shirt, everybody ordered it. And last year, we were remote, so we were never able to wear those. So in April this year, we will be wearing those on Fridays. And then that classroom is also sponsoring a autism awareness announcement contest, poster contest. So we have that open now for students to create different posters promoting autism awareness. And then that classroom will vote on the winner. And they'll use some of the funds from their, the coffee cart to buy a gift card for that student as a reward. So we are looking forward to that and celebrating that. And it's just awesome to have those students in the, the building this year. It's been a little more challenging, they haven't been able to get out and do some of the things like the coffee cart that, that they enjoy to do and to really get that social, socialization. So we're looking forward to that in April. Then the other thing is just a unique thing that I wanted to share. We had a secret person that hasn't come forward yet, find a picture of Mr. Fennel from the eighties and they put it on his door as kind of like, I don't know if it was just, we knew you were around then, like, we're going to put this up here, not say who it was. He showed it to his wife and they realized, my gosh, I still have that shirt. And within the same night, she found the shirt, got it ironed, and he actually wore the shirt that he had in the picture in the eighties to school the next day to the amazement of his students when he said, this is the actual shirt in this picture. So it's just a neat fun thing. He's still out there trying to figure out who to give credit to for finding that picture. So we're finding different ways to celebrate and have fun with different things. And that was just a pretty neat thing that happened this week. So I will keep it going and pass it on to Jeremiah.
Thanks, Eric. Just want to give a shout out to Mr. Drosen. I spoke to him today, catching him up on some middle school things. And it sounds like he's making some, at times painful, but positive progress with his surgery. And so we're just rooting for him and, and his recovery and PT and everything he's going through there and hope he's back with us soon. I had mentioned last time, the cereal box collection we're doing at Lindtown to set up Domino's through the hallway and let the kids view those being knocked down. And then we're going to donate those over to the food bank at the Miller Center. And we're up over 300 boxes so far that we have stored in the maker space, ready to line up at the end of the month. So I think that's going to turn into a really cool Facebook Live or video opportunity for us and for the kids to participate in before we donate those cereal boxes. Just wanted to say thank you, the PSA put on a really nice teacher appreciation for us last Friday. The teachers arrived and the front door of the school was decorated with thank you posters and streamers and things. And we had catered All-Star Bagel in the faculty room and just a nice, nice thing that the PSA does often for our staff, but definitely a nice shot in the arm during, during this year in particular. PSSA testing dates still happening. And I think we've decided as the three buildings that participate in those, we're going to move those to mid to end part of May this year. So over the next month or two, we'll be organizing for that and getting ramped up for that, figuring out how to figure out safe ways and socially distanced ways for our e-school students to participate in those and kind of getting all of those logistics handled, which will be a good thing, I think. And then I'm sure you've seen and heard tonight, I think you're voting on the new math series. And Mrs. Moser has been working tirelessly on that, so I wanted to thank her for all of her efforts in that. We've had a lot of teacher input and participation. And I think that's going to be a really positive thing moving forward at the elementary level. So we're eager, eager to get that started, once that's approved and get those materials into teachers' hands and get started with some of the online professional development and team meetings and things. So teachers can really dig into that as we end this year and through the summer and be really ready to hit the ground running next, next school year. That's it from Lindtown, Mr. Rule, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, good evening, everyone. So Midnight Maze finished last week at Kelly. This is the annual game of tag that has a longstanding tradition that gets the kids excited every year. I just want to give a special thank you to Ms. Cristini and Mr. Campbell for carrying on this, this tradition. The kids were, you know, this is something that reminds the kids of what, you know, quote unquote, "normal" feels like. And they just found really creative ways to, you know, first of all, we scheduled individual classes rather than combining groups of kids to help keep sort of the, the group pods together and, and keep kids safe, using things like foam noodles for tag instead of hands to promote social distancing. And just the kids for following all the revised procedures in order to keep everyone safe. I posted a brief video of some first graders playing Midnight Maze on our Facebook page. And just the parents really loved seeing that. So again, thanks to Ms. Cristini and Mr. Campbell. Also want to share with you that Kelly e-school students are partnering with the Scratching Post Cat Cafe for a service project. The Scratching Post is a nonprofit establishment on Market Street that helps connect cats with loving families. As part of the project, they're collecting supplies for the Scratching Post. So if you're interested in helping to donate to the project, please contact Courtney Jamison via district email. And I think Dr. Fairchild is going to be sharing a flyer with you all with requested items or needed items. And finally, I want to give a special thank you to our PSA for helping Kelly to purchase classroom resources that enhance our social and emotional learning program. The Little Spot Books, there are a series of books and materials which represent various feelings or emotions that children experience. Each spot, if you will, is a different emotion with its own color and facial characteristics. And the books dive into how those feelings and emotions impact children and how children can work to manage those emotions. So the PSA helped to purchase a box set of books for classrooms. Those books focus on, on various feelings and emotions such as happiness, anxiety, anger, love, sadness, peace, and confidence. And the books also come with these small plush spot toys that can be used by the teacher when they're talking with the whole class or with individual students. So these resources really help to give our teachers more ways to engage in discussions with students in proactive ways, as well as when we need to support students who are struggling with emotions and feelings in the classroom. So just thank you to the PSA for their continued support. Thank you very much, and I'll turn the program back over to Mr. Fetzer.
All right, thanks, everyone. And Mr. Wetzel, I think you and I are probably up there maybe vying for Mr. Fennel's shirt. I know we always joke about bringing in our Mind Joggers and Accelerator Reading shirts from when we were going through the district. So I have a shirt from Kelly Cup in 1997. So I might have some competition going with Mr. Fennel in a few years. But anyway, we'll move on to the select presentations. Dr. Fairchild, I'll turn it over to you for the budget 21, 22 update.
Absolutely, all right. So here's our budget update as we continue to progress towards our 21, 22 budget here coming up. As you recall, back in November, we presented our original preliminary budget with a slightly spicy deficit there. The good news is that we've been able to make some progress and make some updates. So first and foremost, our healthcare insurance increase only went up 2% instead of the budgeted 10%. So there were some savings there. We've had some minor updates to personnel and benefits. We've had some updated assessed values, a little bump there. And we've adjusted the additional positions based on the board's direction. So with that being said, you can see that we have managed to bring our deficit back down to about $600,000, $660,000, down from 1.4 million. So I'd say that's a fairly good improvement, but we still have a little ways to go. So with that, we need to close the gap. So my recommendations to the board, part one here, is we, I'm recommending to the board that we reduce our budgeted capital reserve transfer from 350,000 down to zero. This is similar to what we did last year. And if we do happen to have any remainder at the end of the year, thanks to conservative fiscal management, we would transfer that and we would leave the budgetary reserve in place in case we had any emergent needs. So is the board amenable to this particular change to help close the deficit?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Rowe has said yes, folks in the room, how are you feeling? I'm seeing head nods, so, okay, all right, we can do that, all right. And then closing the gap, part two, we are looking at reducing the budgeted cyber charter payments by approximately $310,000. This would still be an increase over our previous year's budgeted amounts. And it assumes that many of our students will return to in-school learning. However, there is a risk that maybe not as many students would return as we have desired. So it may, you know, not necessarily lead to a deficit situation, but we may find ourselves with more expense than what we budgeted. So is the board agreeable to this change and willing to take this risk by reducing our budgeted cyber charter expense?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it possible to take a little more risk so that we could reduce that tax increase that's still factored into the budget?
That is a distinct possibility, yes.
I think you told me this week was 3.44%.
That is correct, yes. The budget still contains 3.44% tax increase, which is just below our limit of 3.5%. But yes, with the board's direction, we can look at other options that may reduce this as well.
Or risk.
Okay, Mr. Heath is in favor of more risk, and I see Mrs. Clark nodding her head as well. So, but in general, is the board in favor of this initial reduction? And then we can look at other things, are folks okay with that risk?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So with that, our next steps, we will have open enrollment for our health insurance for the next year, opening here in April. Hopefully, we can nail down some final variables. I know there's been work on the Act 93 agreement, contract administrators and social workers. Support staff retirements are due in May, but as I've mentioned before, any savings in salary is typically offset by a change in benefits. So we don't look to support staff retirements to really help with our deficit. At our last meeting in April, we'll be looking at the proposed final budget. And at our first meeting in June, we'll be looking at locking down the final, final budget. So with that, are there any questions or comments?
Every year that we don't contribute to our capital reserve leads to taking on debt later and debt costs more than savings, period. I don't want a tax increase just as much as anybody else doesn't. I do think we will have fewer charter school students even than what was projected there. So maybe the savings will be 325K, that would be amazing. And I know that every year, we do have some residuals that we can transfer into our capital reserve. But if you recall, just a few months ago, we heard about our 1960s equipment and we plan on going back to a start date that is still, you know, August when it's hot. And it's just by luck that we haven't had any mold issues like other places. Like, I, I think this is a bigger risk than a head nod, right? This is a real risk that I should probably take a minute to think about.
Okay.
Yep.
And as you said, hopefully with conservative management, we still have a remainder. And if no emergencies come up, we do have our budgetary reserve that can be transferred over if it remains at the end of the year, absolutely. And that also functions as a backup in the event that we don't get as many cyber charter students back as we initially planned on, so.
Do we have good reason to believe that we are going to get cyber charter students back? I mean, I know that a lot of people made that choice simply because of the pandemic. But have we heard from folks that they're intending to come back?
Folks are, folks are certainly asking questions. And I think the town halls have helped to answer some of those questions. I think what remains unknown for some of the families is what the state of the pandemic is going to be going into next year. We don't have any guidance about next year yet from the Department of Health or the Department of Education. We don't really anticipate that until we're further along with the pandemic. So it, they're only there because of the pandemic. And certainly, we're working with the Central Sesquahanna IU on a different e-school option as well, too, a different vendor for that than the vendor that we have. We certainly learned a lot of lessons. We're much further along with an e-school presence than we would have been otherwise. If we can at least, they're still not comfortable to come in. If they can at least switch to our e-school, that would be most helpful. But it still is a parent's choice to choose what they think would be the best option for them. Among concerns, parents did express at the town hall is just really the vaccinations for students as well, too, when those would be available and, and what, if anything, the FDA or the Department of Health ends up requiring is a vaccination that needs to be had by anybody that would go outside of their home and that, that nothing has been changed or updated. And so it's, it's, they're not there for any other reason, but just the situation with the pandemic.
I think there's a, I joined that town hall, there are a lot of really good questions and a lot of, a lot of people who expressed interest and, and, you know, questions about coming back. So I mean, I think that the, the possibility is there, it's just there's so many unknowns. I thought it was a very, very good town hall and, and, you know, excellent questions and a lot of participation from, from parents.
I think the gamble is it's going to be quite late when we find out what the circumstances are for the school year. And so people might choose to start in charter anyway, right? So we might not see, we may start this school year at a higher number of students than maybe we end the school year. And I think it's hard to balance that. I don't think it's going to be like what we're seeing with the return from e-school right now, right? Charter feels like a full year program that people may want to complete, so.
We, we have had a few students come back this year, not many, but from the cyber charters, they have come back. And when they do come back, we are only billed for the time that they're actually in the charter school. So yeah, so there is a little bit of savings, but you're right. Yeah, I mean, people may start the year and then they may come back, they may choose to finish the year.
I don't disagree with anything you said there, and it's all absolutely correct. But 3.44% is, we have to figure something else out. I don't know what it is, if I had the answer, I'd surely present it. But I'm just, that, that looked like a place where we could get a little bit. And I'm willing to try to get a little bit. And it may be that we have to have a really unpleasant conversation later, later to try to figure out something else. But I, I think, I think especially with everything going on right now, a 3.44% increase is not something we really could seriously do.
I'm going to say something remarkably unpopular right now. The reason we are where we are right now is because of our debt service, right? There was a lot of talk about, we always balanced the combination of our debt service plus our previous capital reserve transfers, which was like 2.2 million a year, plus 500,000, that was 2.7 million. Now we spend about $2.7 million a year on debt service. So we have not been transferring those monies into a capital reserve account since we took on that debt in 2014, right? So the reason we were at that point in that year was because of the previous years of not transferring money into a capital reserve account that would allow us to make the capital expenditures that we needed to make. I just, I want to interrupt that cycle. I don't want us to continue down the path that then in a few more years ends up with us refinancing a whole bunch of bonds, taking on a whole bunch of debt, ending up with even a bigger debt service where we'll do a crazy thing, like we'll combine our current, although non-existent, planned capital reserve transfer plus current debt service. We'll say, oh, it's about $3 million a year, and we'll think that our, our debt capacity comfort level is $3 million a year. That's what I would like to avoid.
I understand what you're saying. I will say that although there have been two or three years where we did not budget for capital reserve transfer, we have made transfers even in those years where we didn't, yes, even in those years where we didn't budget anything, we still did make transfers from remainders at the end of the year. So I, I don't think there's been a year where we haven't transferred something to the capital reserve, but I under, I understand your point.
Any other questions, comments? I mean, John, this is something that you don't really need to know tonight. I mean, it's not like we're voting on it, I mean, we're giving, we're giving direction.
Yeah, with my, yeah, and then I'll come back to you and we'll further refine the numbers, see what we can come up with in terms of additional options. But you can see with our two proposals, we're at least closing the deficit gap. Now it's just a question of where do we fall on the spectrum for an increase, so.
All right. If there's nothing else.
Good work, John.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
We'll move on to the board action under old business. The first item is the athletic fund closure, Dr. Fairchild.
Yes, I would ask, as we discussed at the last meeting, we would like to fold the athletic fund back into the general fund, both for reporting and budgeting purposes, as well as paying bills and doing those things. So I would ask that you direct us to close the athletic bank fund and consolidate the funds for the, at the end of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, second by Dr. Zimmerman, any discussion? Hearing none, Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to board action under new business. The first item is the BLAST IU 17 Technology Service Invoice.
Um, there are two service invoices, actually two invoices coming from BLAST. This first one is the current costs that the BLAST IU charged for adjusting some of the networking issues that we had, the immediate threat that we had to our network stability. And that's for $11,460. And this includes firewall and some switches.
Is there a motion to approve the invoices?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brows, any discussion?
Will any of this be able to be covered by the, our equivalent of the CARES Act funding? Because we had to upgrade some technology anyway, maybe.
I think you're talking like E-rate, is that?
The, didn't he have like a $410,000, wasn't one of our grants for some of these types of upgrades?
The COVID relief money?
Yeah.
Do you mean? I believe what they intend for that to be is purchase of additional equipment that didn't already exist.
Okay. This is replacement, this is all like fixes, not.
Devices and that kind of thing.
Any other discussion? Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the quote for technology switches and network licenses.
So this quote is a little bit higher. Couple of years back, we installed switches that aren't capable of handling the volume of internet traffic that we have, that are not appropriate for a district the size with this many devices. And this is essentially to per, to right-size what equipment we should have in order to operate our network and internet.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, second by Mrs. Brows, any discussion?
What's the lifetime on these?
That I do not know.
Are we, like, do we build in, like, the same way we build a replacement cycle for our computers? Should we build in a replacement cycle for some of these types of things?
I believe, yes, I believe the, we had our technology budget plan was in the rolling phases of that, yes. And, and I'm sure our new technology supervisor will make sure that that is covered, you know, for the out years.
Any other discussion? Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unziger Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the Bridges to Mathematics, Mrs. Moser.
Yes, I had shared with you the materials, some overview and the quote. In the last meeting, we're excited to bring this K5 math series in. And given discussion we've already been having tonight, this is monies that does exist in this year's curriculum budget. So by placing the order and securing the materials now, the teachers can have the professional development here, yet even before the close of this school year, making a great transition into the implementation as we would begin again next school year.
So moved, second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, sorry, I can't say your name tonight. Second by, was that, Dr. Zimmerman, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the MTSS Coordinator Job Description.
Move to approve the MTSS.
Your job description?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, second by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? I can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the revised health and safety plan. Paulanchock, any?
Is there, just in the terms of presenting this, we've revised the health and safety plan and will submit this to PDE. We made some updates that are actually listed here. It's just some changes in language so that we're aligned to what our actual practices are right now. We didn't install the HIPAA filters. Instead, we did the needlepoint bipolar ionization. Student seat on the bus. Initially, we thought we wanted to reduce the amount of transit in the aisles, but we have come to learn the quarantine is really about the six feet perimeter around which the students are. So this gives the opportunity for kids to have some choice on where they sit. So hopefully behavior will fall in line appropriately there, too. Added some language about, I'm sorry, changed languages about dances and events that we will have those, but we'll follow whatever the guidelines are and governor's orders to be able to do those things safely and outside as much as possible.
Is there a motion to approve the revised health and safety plan?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Brows, second by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item is the spring athletic health and safety plan.
And this is similar to what we had to do for the fall and winter sports, where we have a specific athletic plan for our athletes and for spectators. Much of everything remains the same. The only difference would be the anticipating the increase in crowds that can gather. We will allow as many people as possible, but if we need to pull that back, we can pull that back.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, second by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion?
When you say everything remains the same, are we talking about the same as the winter plan or the same as the fall plan?
Fall plan. We worked off of the fall plan. In terms of masking as well, too, there is guide, PIA has made some determination about when masking can be worn. As an example for lacrosse, they have mouthpieces in when and where players, and it's very similar. When they're playing, they don't wear masks, but when they're on the bench and they're not six feet apart, then they do need to wear the masks.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Dr. Unziger Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the transfer of the Esser to funds to food service.
Yes, as you know, our food service fund sustained substantial losses both last year and this year due to the pandemic. And so we would ask that you approve this transfer of our federal funds to help make sure that our food service fund remains solvent. And this is an approved use of the Esser funding. So we would ask that you approve this this evening.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fossero?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the update to the Siemens fire alarm monitoring agreement.
Yes, we would ask that you approve this proposal from Siemens for a cellular upgrade to our fire alarm monitoring system and the update to our alarm monitoring service agreement with them.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, second by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion?
This is the beeping here, right?
Yes. Yep. Yes, when, when things aren't quite 100% right, when you walk in the front door and you hear the beeping, that's what this is.
And how long has that been going on?
Well, unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, it has been going off and on for five years since we opened the building. We have been able to do Band-Aids, if you will, but this will be more of a permanent fix rather than another Band-Aid, so.
It's just earplugs, I guess.
Earplugs are cheaper. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to the board policy waiver for student 2021, 2021 10-5.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, second by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing none. I can do this by voice vote. All in favor of waiving the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last item is policies for first reading. You have the policies before you. Anybody want to introduce or point anything out? Dr. Zimmerman, Dr. Jablonsky?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion?
Dr. Polanchock is a policy machine. From the mid 80s.
All right, I can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the next section under board information, new business. Just one item tonight from the president's report. I just wanted to bring an item to the board just for some direction. PSBA has, has a resolution floating out there for cyber funding reform. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. There are school districts that have already passed this resolution. So before we brought it to the board or brought a draft of something else, I just wanted to kind of get the board's feedback in the direction, you know, where to go. This is not something that we typically do. I think our board has always kind of stayed away from resolutions, but this is one that has come up and just wanted to kind of bring it to the board just to get some direction. If it's something that we would like to bring as an agenda item, we can do some, some work, check with our solicitor and bring something back to the board as an agenda item, if that's something that the board would like to do. So just kind of opening the floor just to give a little direction as to if it's something that we want to pursue.
The idea here is that the funding would be covered more by the state because it is unfair that brick and mortar schools have to pay brick and mortar prices for virtual experiences. Yeah, so I think that's a very reasonable resolution.
And I think we see, we saw in our budget conversation tonight that there's a direct relationship between the substantial amount of money that a district like ours is paying for cyber charters and our tax rate. I feel like we have an obligation to our taxpayers to sign this resolution and encourage the state to adjust the funding formula.
I agree.
This has been going on for years. And it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse.
So what is, if we pass a resolution, what changes?
So the resolution is meant to give the legislation a
direction.
A direction that we would like to ask them to consider that.
Isn't that conversation already ongoing? I thought it was part of the governor's request for this.
Yes, like the boots on the ground. We become the boots on the ground and we tell them what our district, how our district feels about and how it impact us. So that's why if you have a number of schools, hopefully a majority that put that forth, that helps.
So I, I am against this. I feel like this is a political move. And as a school board who is really supposed to be neutral in our community, I don't think we should be taking a political stance on things. There's nothing that prevents anybody from picking up the phone and calling your representative and, you know, saying what you want to say to them. But I don't, if, if we were to pass this as a resolution, I would have to vote no. I don't, I don't agree with any resolution in taking a stance for the board. I think there's things we can discuss and things that we can talk about, but to actually put it in writing and be beholden to that, I, I don't think that's the right thing for this school board to do. We tried very much to not be a political body. And by passing resolutions, we are putting ourselves out there as a political body. Then I'm against that.
I think that as a, as a board, at least my time on the board, we've tried to stay away from resolutions just because it, many times it, it can turn into a political argument. I'm personally not in favor of the PSBA resolution. I, I don't think that it's the wording's strong enough that, to separate the, the school funding versus the school choice. I think that those things are often conflated. And so my only concern, at least with the PSBA draft, we could take a look at something else, but I'm, I'm just concerned that we're sending the wrong message to the community that, you know, that we're not, you know, if somebody doesn't read the actual resolution, my only concern is that we're, we're spreading the message that we're going after cyber schools, especially in a time where many people are, are opting to do that during this time for the health and safety of their family. So that's my personal concern is just the, the message that we're sending out to the community.
I, I would like to respond to both of those comments. First, I think I hear you, and I think it's important to be very clear with the messaging. So if the PSBA resolution does create some confusion, I certainly wouldn't want the community to think that this is an anti-school choice resolution. And so we want to make sure that any position we take is clear on that front. I completely agree with you on that. And I also hear what you're saying, Lisa, and I appreciate that we work well as a non-political entity. But we are also the stewards of the taxpayers in this community. And there is such a direct relationship between this cyber funding formula and, and the tax rates, I mean, in our district, but throughout the state. Is that political? I, I mean, I hear you saying that any resolution is political, but in this particular case, when we are the ones who have to make decisions about what, how much tax we're going to ask the people in this community to pay, I feel an obligation to ask the state to do their due diligence to put us in a position where we don't have to ask people to pay so much tax, right? I mean, we, we have an obligation to do the best we can for the people in the Lewisburg area school district. And, and right now, the state isn't helping us out very much with that. So I feel like we have an obligation to, to speak up and say, please help us help these people.
So that then we aren't having to have the conversation like Corey's saying.
Yeah.
What are we cutting? Whose kids are going to impact, right? So this is not, this isn't a conversation we want to have, in my opinion.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Virginia. There certainly is a threat. That, that's exactly the problem that we're talking about with what's going on with the budget right now, that it's what we've experienced. But, but I don't, I only remember in my five or whatever, six years, whatever year this is I've been doing this, I only remember ever doing one resolution. And I, I'll be honest with you, at the time, I wasn't terribly informed about it because it had something to do with, it was something that came out of the mess in Harrisburg that the PSBA recommended and it came before the board. And, and, and most of us voted for it, so it, it wasn't, it wasn't unanimous. I don't, I still to this day don't know what it is because I admit that even I get confused. I'm not an expert about all of that stuff. I, I know enough to know that the funding formula for what we have to pay when a kid decides, a family decides to go somewhere else is ridiculous. It doesn't make sense that we have to pay more to educate a kid that goes to cyber school than we pay to actually educate him when he's here. That, that, that part I can understand. The rest of it, I think, gets very muddled and confused for, for most, most people. And I remember that when we passed that resolution before, there was some noise. Now, maybe we shouldn't care about the noise, but there was still noise from the community. Some people, some people didn't like it. There's always going to be people that don't like it. From the standpoint of actually making ourselves heard, I, I think we could, every one of us in this room can pick up a phone or write a letter or send an email and contact those representatives and, and say, you know what? We're, we're on the school board at Lewisburg and this is a huge problem. And, and we can actually express that, that same thing. And I think it has just as much or maybe more weight coming from us voters as it would as a resolution from the school board that somebody may or may not see. And we, we get the same message across without creating unnecessary controversy, maybe, or maybe going down a road that somebody views as being political. I think there are valid points on all sides. It's, it's definitely a problem that I, that would benefit the taxpayers in this community if it got fixed. How we go about trying to do that is the method, the best method is, is the question. I'm, I'm not sure that the resolution gets it done. Honestly, I don't know if we all wrote a letter a day it's going to get it done individually. We can certainly, we can definitely send the message together.
If you were to bring one forward, I would ask that instead of it singling out the cyber charter schools, that we would look at finding something or resolving something about all school funding that it, across the board needs to be relooked at, not just the cyber charter schools.
So just trying to get some direction. If we choose to bring the PSBA resolution, which I can certainly send out and provide a link to that. It's, it's on PSBA's website, of course. You guys can all certainly take a look at that. If we choose to go that route, you know, it's already done. You just fill it, you know, fill in the, the name of the school. If we choose to kind of draft our own or do something different, it would definitely be a, you know, a wise decision to run it past our solicitor. You don't have, have him, obviously then we're paying him to, you know, to do that for us, so.
Say the taxpayer some money if we get, if that passed. Help us out with that, all funding.
Can we revisit this next meeting after we've all had a chance to review it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll certainly send that out. I just at least wanted to get the conversation started and bring it to the board's attention before, you know, before a draft is actually on the agenda. I wanted to at least, you know, have a discussion, give some options and kind of get a direction. So we can bring this back, you know, for, you know, the next meeting in two weeks after we've all had some time to, to consider that and read over the resolution. So I'll send that out. If you guys have questions about anything, certainly let me know. All right, and that's.
Can I ask a question? John, do we calculate the cost per regular ed student? Is that a accumulated cost? Or do we take like some, the sum of all expenditures on regular ed divided by the number of students and that's how we get it?
Are, are you talking for?
Like when we come up with our whatever, 11,000 something or other?
Our tuition costs, okay, here's a, everything is run by a formula. And actually, PDE calculates our tuition costs based on our budget. And they don't tell us, so for example, the tuition cost for a student to come from the outside to attend Lewisburg School District, we won't actually know that number until May of this year. But it is approximately 12,000 and change for elementary and secondary. Again, that's calculated by PDE based on our budgeted expenditures and minus a few things, this, that, and the other. It's kind of a black box. Something similar for the charter school calculations. We fill in budgeted numbers and then it spits out an amount. Presently, the cyber charter rate for a regular education student is 13,000 and change, so a little more than what we would charge tuition for a student to come here. And a special ed student rate is approximately $26,000 a year calculated through PDE's formula.
Right. And what's fascinating about that is our tuition, the $12,000, includes the fact that we have to turn on all these lights and everything, that we have to pay for a bus, that we have, you know, a loss in our food service account every year. Like all of these things accumulated come out to 12,000. But somehow it costs us more than that. Like that's, that is the crux. It's, it's not political, it's mathematical. It makes no sense.
Right. No, it doesn't.
And I guess, I'm, I don't disagree with that and I think it's a real issue. I just, I'm adamant about not sending the wrong message to parents who are sitting on, you know, the town hall. There's, there's still concern. There's still, you know, there's still parents. There's, there's still concern, there's still, you know, there's still parents trying to make decisions. And I don't want to put those parents or those students in a position where they feel guilted into coming back or, or feel guilty for, you know, for leaving the district. Or make it seem like, like our district among all the, all of the other public schools are going after cyber charters because of this. So I just, I want to make sure that we're sending the right message to even our own students and parents that, you know, this is a problem, I understand that. I just want to make sure that, that it's explicit in what we're doing, that, that we're not sending the wrong message, especially after sitting on that town hall and hearing the genuine concern that, that parents are still feeling, you know, for the rest of this, this school year and also the fall school year.
My response to that, Jordan, is simply, I, I think you're absolutely right. But then it becomes about being very careful about how, how we, how we do the messaging. It's not, we shouldn't take up this issue because there might be confusion. It's our responsibility to make sure there isn't confusion.
Right.
And that we have a good e-school program.
Right.
Right. And that we're not, we're not going after school choice. Absolutely. Like we presented the choices, right? In person, e-school, like we, we gave those options. And we're, we're not saying, we're not making any judgment, whatever, about the, the mode of schooling that you've chosen for your child or families are choosing. That's not at all it, it's strictly mathematical. That is a flawed formula.
Right. No, and again, I don't, I don't disagree. I'm just thinking in my own head, as a board member, I'll read the resolution. As a citizen, you know, as a, as a community member, I would most likely not sit and read that resolution to sift through. I would see the title and, you know, most likely just me as an average Joe would, would conflate those two into, you know, school funding versus school choice. I just want to make sure that we're, that we're drawing that line.
I think this is, there's a very simple way to say it. A lot of kids are in cyber charter right now. Many, many kids from districts all over the place. On average, a taxpayer in Lewisburg, even of a child in a cyber charter, is paying more because we are high local burden and our tuition is high than people in other places. Yeah, John, you have.
I, I was actually just going to say, for the same cyber charter education right now, a taxpayer in Lewisburg is paying over $13,000. A taxpayer in Mifflinburg is paying about $11,000. Exact same school, exact same education.
And we are also higher local burden than Mifflinburg. So direct school taxes on your own property are, I mean, that's what I'm saying. It is, it is, it is strictly mathematical for me.
John, there's no difference for tuition for a special ed student coming into our district paying tuition than a regular ed?
No, the only difference is between an elementary student and a secondary student. But those rates are actually pretty close. But there is no distinction between regular ed and special ed. Correct.
So for that special ed student, we're paying $10,000 more than the district's cost of that student?
Approximately 14,000 more, correct. Yes.
I mean, even just getting rid of that distinction because.
We can just, we can just resolve a table, right? Like we can, we can literally just make a table to explain this. Like this is what it costs here, this is what, you know.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, to explain it.
You know, that's, that's all that I would.
I think just getting this information out and educating, if nothing else, our district. Because I, I really don't think a lot of parents or a lot of taxpayers in our district understand or know these numbers right here. And I think if they knew this, they would be going and complaining.
Right. And I also want to point out, at the beginning of the year, and still to this day, we are thankful for all the families that had the capacity to have their children at home because they are the way that other kids were able to be in school, right? People being in cyber charter and any variation on e-school, homeschool, removed bodies from the building, and that was our main, main concern last summer. So we were, I think, relieved and in a way happy to have, that so many families willing to take on that task, so.
Well, it's our purpose to, to educate the kids, no matter what, how the families choose. They choose to homeschool, it's one way. If they choose to send to a private school, you know, all, all of those things. We've never, ever dictated their choices. We've given them more choices this year, I think, than ever, trying to get the best education for a kid in this global pandemic. And I still think that, you know, we've done a better job educating the kids in person or even e-school through our own means than most of the cyber charter schools. And I mean, there's, there's those numbers we can put out there too. You know, when Dr. Drakos, he used to always give their yearly progress, you know, most of them didn't need it. So I, I just think that, yeah, safety, I, I don't want to, I don't want to disregard anyone's choice of that, obviously. But I don't think that a lot of people understand these numbers or know them.
And a lot of them are the people that are involved with the cyber schools. They just don't realize they're paying more for an education but not getting a quality education as they would in-house.
So is that a direction to draft? I know we were going to think about it and come back. Is that a direction to draft something different then?
Why don't you send around the PSB resolution so we can think about it? And then Erin, do you feel like you can produce a chart?
Yeah, I mean, John, that's.
Numbers Monkey is on the case.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on then to the superintendent's report.
Okay. So March has been a busy month. And first, I would like to announce that many of our teachers and staff have received vaccinations through the CSI U. Teachers and staff have also received vaccinations on their own through their own eligibility for the vaccines. And as they become more available, we are hopeful that next school year will be a little bit closer to normal. This spring, we will resume some events and activities. Many of them will be modified due to restrictions, but this is a really great benefit to our students and our families. And they deserve the opportunity to make memories and have a little bit of fun this summer. On April 10th at 10:00 AM, the Brandon Cram Memorial Baseball Field will have its dedication ceremony. I would like to thank the Green Dragon Foundation and the Cram family for their generosity and support. The town hall virtual, the town hall virtual meetings have been very informative. Our next will be on Tuesday, March 30th at 7:00 PM. There's a Zoom link on our website. And we are discussing parents' questions and concerns about returning from an e-school environment, cyber charter environment, or non-traditional homeschool. We will build, be building out a webpage with information for these families to share what our plans might look like. Again, all of this is pending any kind of guidance that we get in the situation with the pandemic coming throughout the summer and into the fall. School will not be in session April 1st, 2nd, and 5th for the spring break. We hope that everyone enjoys their time off. And as we move into spring and begin to turn the corner with this pandemic, now that vaccines are available, we do ask that our community continues to wear masks and practices social distancing and to just make safe choices over the holiday break. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Collant. We'll move on to board liaison and committee reports.
I have one. We have at your station's summary of our JOC meeting. I'd just like you to note that you will be having our certificate award program at the Chiclumee High School Stadium. We usually have it at, or, Susquehanna. But they are very slow in getting back as to how many we can have there. And I think, what did, 6, 3,000? I think that stadium will hold Chiclumee, so that's going to be outdoors. And there's a rain date. I don't remember the rain date. The virtual open house for students, for students and parents of incoming students for 2021 will be virtually from 6:00 to 7:30 April 14th. And I sent you all the flyer that I received regarding our summer camps with the seven topics that they can participate in. We are going to be losing our electronics technology instructor, Leonard Sports. He's retiring. And that is the class we're going to be shutting down for a year to revamp some robotics, some more higher tech qualifications that the area business people have been recommending to the occupational advisory committee. They meet over at Sun Tech. There's new changes in what Lenny was teaching. Although he was certified to teach drones. And I was concerned about that because that was a popular summer class. And we own those drones. So there is actually, skip down the last bullet. We, we hired Sean Eddy. He is going to be certified to teach that. So maybe not this summer, but next summer. So he will be replacing Tom Gray, who's been our director of technology. Everybody's looking for somebody in technology, it seems like. So we will miss Tom. And then we approved our budget of 7.3 million. So that will be coming down to all of us for approval in the future.
The IU report is in the minutes, and I can't get too into it with you because I have to miss it due to a family emergency.
Anything else?
I'll share that they did run the governor's STEM competition. I was, instead of being a judge, because there were not that, there was just the one team that wanted feedback. I was a provider of feedback this year. But it did give me a pretty good sense of, the students who presented were excellent, but students are just exhausted of Zoom and they're exhausted of everything that you have to do to accommodate high school, normal things in a distanced virtual, you know, whatever world. So it's a, you know, window into just the high school fatigue of the situation. But the students were amazing, and they dealt with all the same kinds of tech, whatever. It was a Midwest team.
The alumni association met a month ago. I just got the minutes. They're meeting tonight, but it all comes out of our board meetings. But the big thing, there was a motion to skip the spring spaghetti day dinner, or election day dinner. Spaghetti day dinner, that should be a new day. Anyway. I made a motion to approve that. So they're doing it in the fall, hopefully, but they, they did make a motion to, to skip the spring. So once I get the minutes from this evening's meeting, I'll report back on that.
Oh, I have one more thing from Sun too. I have a director's comment, but I'll throw it in now. I just checked, I was texting Jen during the meeting. But I, I, I'm concerned, you know, because we, we wanted to have the gazebo out here for the kids, route that way. And it is done to the point where they, they just have to put the roof on, trim, and stain it. And then I guess we're going to be responsible for transporting it here. Nobody knows that. I asked Jen, she said, no, Lewisburg's making arrangements about that. So anyways, once it's done.
Sure, we can look into that.
It should soon be done. I asked Albert, he might know.
So the, the gazebo?
It's, it's done.
Yes, it's done. Both myself, Anne Glock from Green Dragon Foundation, and Paula Reber had a discussion. Paula, some of this through email, some of this through Zoom and on the phone, along with Jen Hane. The gazebo was set up, as it was constructed, it's very plain right now. So having some flower boxes, a little bit of trim, just to dress it up a little bit, and also to stain it for us as well. Mr. Galagos is aware of where it is. He and Paula just have to decide where they'll put that because the ground will have to be leveled and compounded and whatever needs to be done to make sure that the gazebo will sit correctly. And whoever it is that moves our sheds around will be able to put it on the forklift and put it up. He just.
Our shed mover?
We'll bring you a proposal from Delbert's Shed Warehouse.
I don't think this is at any cost to the district to have it moved over here. But it will, we, he suggested that we put some footers on it just so that it can be, you know, just the way it's going to be set up.
And there, and there may be a slight cost to prep the ground because in order to make it handicap accessible, we'll have to dig down a little bit, put down a rock base, that sort of thing, and then get it installed that way. Delbert has been looking into this.
Or ramp onto it as well, too, while we're there. So I, I did ask Jen Hane to ask the kids, just be creative about what kind of molding might be appropriate or their shadow box. This is really an opportunity for them as they're preparing something for a customer. And there's a template, they should really have the opportunity to, you know, show their talents and skills.
All right. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to have removed and vote upon separately? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the revised personnel report?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Brown, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unfigur Pacero?
Yes, with the exception of the minute from last meeting.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Motion, sorry.
You skipped me. Yes. That's okay.
Dr. Silverman?
All right, we'll move on to director's comments. Mary Ann, I'll start with you.
So excited for the athletes. And then a special shout out to Kimmy for being that first female swimming gold medalist in our history. That's amazing. Thrilled for her to sort of break that barrier. I have a picture of Mr. Fennel from the eighties because he was my honors English teacher. So, but I didn't do it, but I would have if I thought of it. But that's fabulous. I'm just hoping Mr. Rosen's feeling better. You know, everybody's just continuing to be so creative. I'm, I'm just thrilled with everything that's happening, so. And I also just wanted to comment, we had, is it okay, dentistic? We had our first equity inclusion committee meeting this past week, and it was great, I thought. Some really great conversation. People were really engaged and enthusiastic. And I'm just really thrilled to see how it progresses.
Yes, also, congratulations to the athletes. It's, you know, it's such a bummer that we can't have them here, but it's great that we have them at all. And, and, you know, especially after what was surely an extremely stressful and trying season. Congratulations to them. And also just such great news about the vaccines. I'm grateful to the teachers who made the time to come out and made the choice to, to get them. And it's just good news for our kids.
I just want to say I'm excited about the new math series for K through 5. I think that's great, and it seems like it's getting really high accolades. So very excited to see what that brings about in the next year or so. And I just want to throw out a yay on the school having the prom this year as the mother of a junior who's ecstatic that they're having the prom. Thank you, thank you, thank you for doing that.
Mary?
I'd like to do what everybody else said, and I, my hat's off to the athletes. I grew up watching my husband wrestle, so I can relate to wrestling. And I know Wagner Boy, I, his dad and my second son ran around together and did a lot of fishing guys. So that was kind of dear to my heart, even though I haven't really met him personally. And just hats off to the teachers and staff and the administration for the work, the hard work you've had in the last two years. I mean, I just, I, I can't even stand being in your decisions. I just appreciate everything everybody's done.
I'm just happy that I'm back in a person meeting. It's nice to have conversation. I, I feel like the Zoom meetings, we get stuff accomplished. But to, to be able to have these conversations, I just don't think they happen as much when we Zoom. And so it's nice to hear what other people are thinking and to get the ideas and, you know, so that we can continue to work as a team, which is awesome. Glad to hear that prom's probably going to happen. Exciting. I really just want to say, as not only a parent but a board member, that so many things got missed last year. And not to say they shouldn't have, but you know, I think that everything was very much closed down. And we didn't really have maybe as much virus in the area last year. Maybe more virus in the area this year, but I still think that we can do things safely. And I, I just would hate to see another class miss out on so many awesome things for their senior year. And so hopefully we can keep progressing so that we have the, the important lasts for them. Because for us, it's another event to attend. For them, it's, it, it's very meaningful. So I think it's important to keep that in mind, that these kids don't get a second chance at it, so. But I appreciate all the.
So, but I appreciate all the effort going into those things. And I think the kids have been speaking up, which is awesome. And I would encourage them to continue because they can, if they can overcome this, things they've been through this year, they can, they can keep, keep us moving in the right direction. So good job. And awesome job to all the athletes. Like, wow, I have a swimmer, so it was very exciting. So those kids put a lot of time and effort into it. I mean, it's not just a season, it's year round. And so the fact that a freshman girl did what she did, hats off. Awesome.
Kathy?
Yeah, I'll take the opportunity to speak to two things. Thank you again for, yes, the endorsement to move the math curriculum forward. We're excited about it. And connected to Tara's thoughts, another piece returning, the PSA facilitated running club that they get very excited about opening up opportunity for families to just come out on a Sunday afternoon and run. Megan Dwyer has been working with me. Our revised health and safety plan, our spring athletic health and safety plan, and some guidance documents that they've created make us all feel safe, that that's another important piece that while we weren't able to do it last spring, it's exciting that that's going to be back in place here in the coming weeks. So again, just another good positive thing here for our community. Thank you.
John?
I echo everything that's been said, nothing to add.
Erin?
Yeah, I also want to congratulate the, the athletes. I'm, I'm hoping that in the April board meeting, we might get an update on the Autism Awareness Month activities, just to see what's going on. I want to also give a shout out to the PSA. I know that the teachers really do appreciate the teacher appreciation things that the PSA does. And they put a lot of time in, you know, unusual hours to get all that ready for teachers coming in. I am also excited about the new math series. And, let's see, oh, and I hope George gets well soon.
Cory? I don't know what I can add. You know, I'm excited about shopping for prom dresses.
You're starting that time.
It's, it's nice to hear things that at least sound normal, even if they don't necessarily look normal quite yet. But it's nice, nice to hear about them. It's nice to hear the rain, I guess.
Just in time.
Just in time for us to walk.
I thought I had us covered, everybody.
I forgot mine there. I was thinking about for you.
Jen, anything else?
The only thing I would say is that, you know, important for our community to know that the school directors devote a lot of time to being school directors besides just attending the meetings and reading everything ahead of time and attending some different committee meetings to which they're assigned to. They, you know, they're, they're looking at different reports that come from me on a weekly basis and trying to stay as informed as they can while doing their day jobs and living their lives. The spring is always really difficult for school boards because we have to make some very tough decisions. And it always comes around bringing that budget in to balance and also deciding what we would do if there is to be a tax. And if we don't tax, what we might have to come back on. And so this is, I, I see you all as a very well-meaning board that are working together. And I appreciate all of your efforts and just know that this is, there's never a time where it's really easy to be a school director. But I think this, the spring is always the most difficult time because of decisions that have to be made. So I thank you for that.
I'm sure a lot come on, it's in the springtime. Even here in over at Sun Tech, it's a busy time.
I'd just also like to say it's great to hear everything going on. Mr. Rowe, thank you for reaching out and providing all the board members with Mrs. Jamison's project. It probably doesn't come to any surprise for anybody who knows me that I'm very excited to hear about the scratching post project. Our business will actually put a collection box out. I already, you know, as soon as I heard that, reached out to Mrs. Jamison to see what, you know, as a vendor, as a, you know, local community business, what we could do to help out with that. So we're going to try to coordinate, you know, at least a drop-off collection box and see what, what else we can do. So it's just exciting to hear, you know, the inclusion for our e-school students, some of the projects and some of the things going on. It's just great to hear that, that all of these things are still happening. So with that, we'll move on to citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. John, anything that's come in?
We'll take a look here. Nope, no comments to the board on non-agenda items.
All right, with that, we'll move on to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Brown, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.